Everyone, today is Friday, May 2nd, 2025. It is 12:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. There's a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible. We're going to bring justice for all.
We have some continuations of some Verizon/EverSource poll hearings. First part of this, Verizon withdrew four petitions so they could re-advertise due to scheduling conflicts. So I would need a motion to accept Verizon's withdrawal petitions. MA 2024-22, MA 2024-23, MA 2024-25, MA 2024-40. There's a motion to accept the withdrawal petitions.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. So we have petition MA 2024-23 from Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource to place five new jointly owned polls. 102/30.5 at 35 Mendel Road, 102/31.5 at 31 Mendel Road, 102/32.5 at 27 Mendel Road, 102/33.5 at 25 Mendel Road, and 102/34.5 across 20 Mendel Road. The installation of these polls is at EverSource's request for the purpose of cable upgrade along route. Petition MA 2024-25 from Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource to place five jointly owned polls. 139/1.5 at 634 Main Street, 139/2.5 at 27 Perry Hill Road, 139/3.5 at 35 Perry Hill Road, excuse me, 139/4.5 at 53 Perry Hill Road, 139/5.5 at 53 Perry Hill Road. EverSource requests Verizon install five new mid-span's along Perry Hill Road. Petition MA 2024-26 from Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company DBA EverSource to place multiple jointly owned polls. 102/18.25, 102/21.5, 102/22.5, 102/26.5, 102/28.5, and 102/29.5 along Mendel Road. Installation of these polls is at EverSource's request for the purpose of cable upgrade along the route. So we'll take these first. We will have another one after that. So we've got Mendel Road, Perry Hill, and Mendel Road on this particular one. So we've got a bunch of maps in front of us, gentlemen. Anybody from Verizon want to speak on these or EverSource? And then we'll open it up to any residents with any questions.
Good morning.
Morning.
Brian Simmons from Pike Telecon, representing Verizon. So we've submitted all the applications and Ellen Cummings of our Public Affairs Department met with the board on Thursday, I understand, and went over all of the double polls. And hopefully that was sufficient in explaining the situation on each one.
That's good. So this isn't about the double polls. This is about new polls. Looks like EverSource is requesting all of these.
Correct.
This is 15 or 16 new polls, all mid-span, Anthony?
All mid-span. It's not sort of like the distance between existing polls to cut down on sag and so forth. So there's no polls in these locations now?
Correct. Is there any residents here from these areas that have any questions or concerns? Alright. Gentlemen, any questions and concerns?
Yeah. So what petition is 44 Mendel Road on? Can you tell me that? I did take a picture of the map and I did go out to look at some of these locations because it seems like a lot of your supporting polls that you're putting in are in the center of people's properties.
Petition that doesn't show addresses is MA 2024-26.
I don't see it on there as 44, but there is a flag location.
Read this one?
I don't think it showed yet, Anthony.
So that would be MA 2024-26. 44 Mendel Road right here. 204-24-26. Right across the street at 55.
Yeah, but there's a flag location on that side of the road, 44. And it's showing it's on the opposite side of the road, which doesn't make any sense. That's Perry Hill Road. I don't know why they're seeing 44. Maybe, I don't know how these lots are coming out. It's kind of screwed, their maps. I don't get their maps. You have 44 Mendel Road because your maps are a little bit screwy the way you show lots coming out on Perry Hill Road. I don't know who does your map, Scott.
We're looking for-
There's a proposed poll going right in the center of 44 Mendel Road. And there's no tree line in front of that property like there are in front of other properties where these polls are going in the center of people's lots. And I know, I don't think we have anybody here from 44 Mendel Road or anybody from any of the poll locations, but I'd be very concerned if I was getting a poll stuck right in the middle of my yard. When I look out my front door, my picture window, all I see is an ugly telephone pole in the middle of my yard. Normally telephone poles are placed on the property bounds of the lot lines, right? And now you're starting to pop them in between in front of everybody's homes. We had this problem on Manchester Lane a while back and it was resolved. So I'm only trying to speak for the residents. Maybe they just can't make this meeting at this time, wherever it may be. But there are several poll locations being put in front of people's lots, right in the middle of their lots. Some of them are not that big of a deal when I drive by and I look at it because there is a tree line. So when you look out, you'll see trees and a pole will blend in with it, right? I don't think there's that much of a hardship there. But when the 44, when I went by that one, there's no trees in front of it. So I can't speak for the folks that are here, you know, if they're not here. But I know that if I was living there, I'd have a problem with that.
I'm looking at the map and I don't see us placing a pole in front of-
It's funny because your map on this one shows it on the other. So your poll's going on the opposite side of 44, but that's not the case because you have yellow flags on that side of the road where 44 is.
Yellow?
There's a bunch of yellow flags all down Mendel Road. I figured that was where your poll locations are going.
That should be the gas department.
Yeah. Stakeout would be typically pink, right?
It'd be orange and white for Verizon.
Okay, so those flags are for gas lines?
Typically. We wouldn't use flags. We use wood stakes.
Okay.
But I'll drive by and double check to make sure. And if a mid-span is-
I mean, you can clearly see your polls are going in the center of people's lots, right? So it's out of nature of what's been done in the past where your polls, most polls are located on property lines.
So these are mid-span, so a little different? I can shift them up-
I understand the mid-span polls for support. The problem is, is, you know, aesthetically, it looks like crap, right, for the homeowner? And it's not their problem that somebody's making a bang or a buck on a solar field and that's why mid-span polls are going in for the upgrade of wires, right?
I do have some wiggle room. I can move it in like a 10-foot window.
Question, Anthony? Can we-
My eyes see wider than 10-foot span, right? I mean, I get it. I mean, that's kind of a knock on the door type of thing for a courtesy to the property owners and saying, would you like me to set it more to the left, more to the right? I get that. Some cases, it would make the pole disappear from their visibility. But this particular home has nothing out in front.
Alright, I'll take a look.
So the existing polls, are those being replaced? To tell you the truth, I mean, I look at polls all day, so I'm not paying attention to specific addresses. And you know my feelings on the polls and the question right now. So similar to what Mr. Gaspard brought up earlier involving Manchester, where we had this discussion about one stuck right in a bay window.
Yep.
And they were putting taller polls up anyway and using stronger cross braces to make up the sag. Has that been looked in for any of these? Or is that something that your engineering team decide that mid-span polls are a necessity?
That's a good question. I'll have to get back to you on that one. I don't think it's the same as Manchester Lane for mid-span polls. I think if these were new polls going in property lines, like on the existing polls, that could be an option. I don't know if that's an option for us. I'd have to ask it, Anthony.
I don't understand your- I asked you this question a while ago about your engineering firm. You said, I don't know, I have to check with engineer. And it's the middle road one that's on this agenda as well that I had a problem with, right? Because I spoke with that homeowner being right alongside of the driveway, the entrance for the driveway. It's kind of BS. And you said, I don't know, I gotta check with engineer why they would do that. Doesn't make any sense that you're putting a mid-span pole randomly sticking it over here. When you go down, you measure the distance between all the other polls, north and south of where you're doing one mid-span pole, and there's no other mid-span polls. So why there? I asked that question last time on the 244, I think it is, middle road. It doesn't make any sense. You would think that if you have to put a mid-span pole there, because the polls are 200 feet apart, every other pole's 200 feet apart, but you're not putting mid-span polls anywhere else down middle road or north and south of that one. So why that location was picked is beyond me.
What's the address again?
That one I didn't even pull up yet, which is-
It's not up for discussion right now, but it's middle road, 244, I think it is. 284 Middle Road. That's the next petition. But I'm just bringing it up because all of these are mid-span polls too, right? And it doesn't make any sense either because I drove and driven down Mendel Road yesterday and I was trying to look at somebody's Perry Hill Road.
Yep.
You're not doing it there either, just kind of randomly picking where you're putting mid-span polls. It doesn't, the math doesn't add up to me if you're there for support.
What I know, the basis, what I know is it's supposed to be kept at about 130 feet give or take. That's why the mid-span polls get put in. If that's, that could be incorrect, I'll get it-
But if that's the new protocol, that's fine. But the problem is, is we've been living with polls 200 feet apart, 250 feet apart for decades. And it's never been a problem.
Right.
So I asked the question, why now?
The wire is much heavier. The potential for sag is much, there's much more potential for it. The polls are 10 feet taller. That's the only reason that I know. But if, for some of these polls, I can look, and like I said, the best thing I can do is sort of, I do have some flexibility to move them around a little bit. And it might not work for 44 Mendel, but I'll do the best I can to alleviate some of the problem. And it's a courtesy knock on the door if that's what you want me to do. And when we open up 284 Middle, I'm open to any suggestions and what you guys-
When you're doing a project like this, it doesn't make any sense though. So if you have that pole in, you have to do a mid-span pole in order to get that pole out from the center line of somebody's property. Why wouldn't you just be a little more creative and say, so this is an existing pole and I'm putting a new pole in. Let me just go in front of the board and ask them if I could take that existing one and move that one over. So now you get these polls 50 feet or 75 feet apart.
Sure.
So why wouldn't you just, the original people look at it and go, well, why don't we move this one over 25 feet? Because it's not, you know, in the sight line over here. And then this one I can move 50 feet that way instead of just giving me a 10-foot window. And you still have that span now. You're setting a new pole anyway. So your engineering department's obviously just looking things from a Google Earth map from 30,000 feet in the air instead of actually doing what they should and go out, look at the actual properties and say, you know what, let's do this a little bit differently. It's going to be obstructive to that family. Let's move this one over. We're going to set a pole anyway, move that one 25 feet, move that one 25 feet. Now it's a little further down the yard line, right?
Sure.
Instead of giving us this, that's just like, hey, set the pole where it is. You're asking permission for other new pole settings anyway. So why wouldn't you just ask permission to say, we're going to take this pole and shift it over 25 feet, 50 feet, whatever it may be?
I get it.
And then you reduce the span between that one and this one anyway. But now you've got this little 75-foot span between polls. It just blows my mind that nobody's thinking outside of a box.
Yep, I hear you. I'll take it back. That's the best I can do to the survey and engineering team. I don't, you know, I wish I could design them. I don't.
I wish the person that was designing them right now would do a little bit better job of thinking outside the box, right?
I agree.
Instead of a 30,000 square, you know, feet up in the air.
Right.
This is a lot of polls.
Sure, I get it. Yeah, yeah. But this is the last batch, right, Stephen? That's some similar line.
I just don't want, it's a mid-day meeting, right?
Yep.
And we don't know if those folks that live in these homes are at work. They can't make this meeting to speak on behalf of themselves, right?
Sure.
And I'm going to make a decision for them that could impact them.
I've done it-
And I don't feel comfortable doing that.
I've done it for other towns. I'll knock on the door, work with the homeowner for some. And I'll go back to engineering, see if there's a little bit of wiggle room we have on moving some of these polls. But I'll commit to you guys that I can knock on the door and sort of work with the homeowner on a little bit of an adjustment.
It's a little bit late for that on the middle road because you've already set the new polls in alongside of the other polls. They're already there. You're not going to go and pull that pole back out now and move it down 25, 50 feet like I just talked about, Anthony. The only thing you're going to do is go knock on the door. Hopefully you get somebody at the door and they'll go, yeah, it'd be nice if you could move it over 10 feet, but not really.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
But if there's a way, and some of those are 75 feet, 100 feet, there's a way to keep that span to not have to have that mid-span pole. Maybe there's a way to not even put it there, right? That's what I'm saying. I know what I get-
It's just kind of weird that you're putting mid-span polls. Let me go back to that, right?
Sure.
You're putting mid-span, engineers putting mid-span polls only in certain spots, but they're leaving other spots with that 200-foot stretch. Does that make any sense to you? Because it doesn't make any sense to me. You're carrying the same load all the way down the road, but all of a sudden, boom, now I got a mid-span pole here. But I don't have it on the first thousand feet. That's my, I don't understand the rationale of being an engineer and doing these kind of crazy things.
I totally hear you. And I know the guy to get these answers from, so I will get those answers.
Suggest that we're waiting for answers. Push this out again. Looking at some of the butters list, I know for a fact a lot of these butters, especially for the Main Street and Perry Hill Road are at work because I know they do work. When's our next meeting?
I know what you have in your mask.
That's why I found that way. May 13th?
I have two sneakers on.
Yeah, we do it like a regular.
Might talk for me.
Thanks.
Is it the day?
No, we do it at night. A regular, get back to our regular. Alright. Out of respect for Mr. Gaspard's concerns, Anthony, I'm going to ask for a continuance of this. MA 2024-23, MA 2024-25, and MA 2024-26 to May 13th.
True. Ready?
Is that what we just said? May 13th? Now, are we getting into the meeting?
Sure.
At 4:00 PM, is there a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anthony, keep in contact with us and let us know if that engineer or the person you're reaching out to happens to be willing to come down to town. Call me and I'll go out there with you guys and we can go through it and figure it out. I want to make sure we get some answers.
Take one thing at a time.
And if the chairman's not available, whatever day you can come, give out my number. You can call me and I'll do my best to get out there with you.
Yeah, absolutely, can do that.
If he's scheduled, I'll do it.
Perfect.
Help you out.
Alright, we're going to jump to MA 2024-40 from Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy proposing new facilities. Poll 104/55.5 on Middle Road. Middle Road installed one joint-owned mid-span pole, 104/55.5 on the east side of Middle Road, which will be approximately 860 feet southwesterly from the center line of Paris Lane. The new pole will be installed in line with and approximately 86 feet south of existing pole 104/56, approximately 106 feet north of existing pole 104/55. The installation is being requested by EverSource to support the existing pole line and to keep the wire at a safe height over the driveway of the property at 284 Middle Road. Anthony, this is exactly the one that we've already spoken about and Mr. Gaspard did ask questions about in regards to placing it right on the edge of this gentleman's driveway.
Yep.
And the last time we spoke on this, we were supposed to get some kind of information. It was a while ago, I understand that. But I know for a fact that the resident still-
I'll get this one.
Is going to have an issue with that sitting right on his driveway line.
Totally.
He's actually got two little driveways. He's got a long driveway that goes in the back of his business. He's got another small driveway on the right side, which would be the south side of his property now. And if you put the pole anywhere between those two driveways, now you're smacked out right in the center of his house.
Yep.
So that's something that if you want to go out there and give me a call and I can introduce you to him and we can have that conversation where maybe you have to go south.
Yeah.
By 25 feet or so.
Sure.
We can figure that one out as well. Motion to continue, MA 2024-40 to May 13th. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before you continue that, can I just address one issue maybe?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I own the property from 330 to 308 Middle Road and I got a notice about this. In the past, I've complained to, at first it was linemen. I have a driveway that makes entry and I have a boat. And every time we go with the boat, you gotta go on top of the boat, push the lines up. It's mid between, the sag's actually right in the middle of two poles. They've come down a few times. When I see some linemen working in the area, I ask, ma'am, on your way home, can you stop and see if you can do something about it? Well, you get lip service saying, well, it's not our pole, it's the telephone company's pole. And another group came and assessed it and I don't know if it's appropriate, but they zip-tied the lines together. I don't know if that's an appropriate fix or remedy. I just like that answer that that is the appropriate way to address a mid-sag in order to get the height for the driveway.
Can we, Mr. Chairman, can we get this gentleman's-
No, my name is Ted Chopper.
And you said it was between 3-
The polls that I'm in question of is between 104/59 and 104/60. Those are the two polls. And it just happens, one of the polls is compromised because they put the metal frame around it and so forth. Another group that showed up said the remedy to fix it is put taller pole, a taller pole height. And they said, well, let's hope someone hits the pole so it can get replaced. And I just said, well, I don't think that's a good answer. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know which way to call it, two poles away, someone hit and they replaced it right on Paris Lane not long ago.
His property is-
Two poles away. So their suggestion about him, oh, was he stopped by two poles. But I didn't know somehow someone, if they're going to be doing work on Middle Road in that area, could maybe address my issue about the polls. And I have a picture of showing where the lines are and the sagging and how they zip-tied it.
Yeah.
Can I take a look at the picture when you're done?
Absolutely. Let me just bring it up on my phone here. They zip-tied them together. Because if you look further down, you see, oh, they were spinnin' apart. They zip-tied before, zip-ties in the middle of the driveway. There's the driveway. And you can see where there's three or four lines that they zip-tied together. This is the driveway and you can see the lines zip-tied if you zoom in.
Oh, yeah, I know where you are.
They zip-tied it together. Exactly.
So go back to your normal, please. I know where you are now.
So this three or four lines, you see how-
Where's the relationship in the new farm barn you built?
Right there. That's where you have to get access to the driveway, get access to the barn. You know, the problem is, and measures probably at a height that's within reason with them. The problem is, when you come in with a trailer with something on it, you're coming in and it's tossing it. So it's all under a level body that they're measuring like on the road.
Yep.
They're coming in and they're hitting the approach of the driveway, which is raised and the load shifts. And, you know, you've got a few things on the boat that stick up. So you go through activation, put someone up there to push the wires up. It helped immensely by the zip-tieing.
Yep.
You know, I don't know what will happen.
So Anthony, I think we can help this gentleman at the same time, right? So I think what we need to do is look at what I just spoke of, of moving polls around, right? So when we go out there and take a look at this one, we should be looking at the distance and maybe doing something and shifting the pole, the existing polls, shifting them and see if we can jog the polls down to accommodate the address that's already here. We're going to put one in Mr. Chopper's property as well. If we could do a little shift in between, you might have to do two poles, maybe a third pole, whatever it is, or shift the polls where they're currently sitting. But I'd like to try to, he's the next door neighbor to the address.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. That's why I got noticed about this and I was just curious about what you have to go through to get the lines raised. And, you know, a new pole that's a little taller would solve it, not necessarily a mid-post, but another pole. If someone would just come out and I'm sure it'd be assessed and an easy remedy for someone that knows what they're doing.
So are there two poles there, new poles there now?
No.
Just the old ones?
They're old ones and one of them has that metal brace around it that, I don't know, a compromised pole? I don't know what, whatever the language-
They put them everywhere. They came in last year, the year before, they're everywhere else.
I asked them what they were doing. They said, because of the ancient pole and the structure of the pole, they're reinforcing it with this metal brace. That's the answer I got.
So those two poles are supposed to be replaced?
Which ones?
The two, where in the middle of that stand where the two poles on the end?
Yes.
Those two poles are going to be replaced to-
Anthony?
Yes.
This way you're proposing to put this, where you're proposing to put this pole?
They're three poles away from where the pole you are talking about.
He's roughly 300 feet from the pole that you're proposing.
Yeah, at least.
Right?
I would say so.
We'll take a look at that.
The two poles in question that I'm talking about are 104/59 and 104/60.
Yep.
So I'm a few poles away from the one you are talking about.
Okay.
Okay? But it's still-
You made a motion to continue to the same date as the other one, which is May 13th at 4:00 PM, is there a second?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Okay, well, that's the case then.
Alright, we'll still-
Take my number down. I'm retired now, but I can eat some. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your consideration. Have a nice day.
See you later. Alright, so Anthony, we're going to continue these to the 13th. In the meantime, between then, reach out to the office and we'll see if we can get down there and walk around. Like Mr. Gaspard said, if I can't get ahold, if you can't get ahold of me, get ahold of him, call Dave. Like, we can figure this out.
Yeah.
We'll just put together a proper plan to make sure that everybody ends up with something that works for them and works for you guys as well.
Sure. Yeah.
Should you bring the guy from engineering?
He's coming.
Okay, very good.
I already texted him.
Good man.
Very good.
Alright. Alright. Next order of business, reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. Gentlemen, it was a pleasure serving as chair the last year.
Was it?
It was. Had a lot of learning and I enjoyed it. But at this point, we do this every year. Suggest if we accept a motion to make David Woner the chairman of the Board of Selectmen?
I'll make a motion to appoint David Woner chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Alright, we'll do this ceremonial.
Move this thing over.
He's already pushing me out of the way.
That's how he rolls. Congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, before I do this, I just want to say, over the last couple of years I've watched Mr. Gaspard and Mr. Hankley lead this board beyond reproach. By far two of the hardest working selectmen that I've ever served with. And it's really a pleasure to work with you gentlemen. I know we all have different styles, but I think without pumping our own tires, I think that's what kind of makes it work. We think we all complement each other in certain ways. Just as an FYI, earlier, prior to accepting your position, I met with department heads today just to-
today just to say hello. You know, one of the concepts we talked about was getting some visibility for our department heads before the general public. And I think it's an opportunity for them to tell the taxpayer what they're up to, what they're working on, and turn how their money is being spent on a daily basis. So with your agreement, I'd like to do that on a routine basis, more than just as needed, but I think it's good to get some muscle memory in that department. So with that said, if it's all right with you, I would like to take out of agenda, take the agenda out of order. We've got our finance team here, Jamie, Jen, and eventually Tanya, to just talk about what's going on in the finance department. Jamie's newer to the position, Jen, you've been now going, what, your one-year anniversary-ish, right? So I think it's just a good opportunity to share your findings, what you're working on, and what you see coming down the pipe.
Do you want me to stay here or do you want me to-
Why don't you go to the podium?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. How are you? Jamie Blask, Assistant Town Accountant. So in the last few months, I've spent a lot of time reviewing all the twenty-five budgets and making some, a few adjustments, reclassification for anything that was, you know, an error, went to the wrong line. This way it gives you a clearer view of the budget so you can see exactly what was, you know, what should be charged where. So going into the FY twenty-six budget, I've been working on reviewing and posting invoices and the payroll, making sure things are done properly, again, things charged properly. I work with town administrator Jamie Kelly on the FY twenty-six budgets along with the department heads and making sure we can come to agreements and we're all set for, you know, the next fiscal year. I work with the conservation and planning departments on creating spreadsheets for their fifty-three G accounts, which is stormwater and peer review. They're a little disorganized, so I asked you how much funding is in each, so we just, you know, we put it all together and now, you know, it's a much clearer view as to which each account has for funding for, you know, when the engineering comes through for those. I'm working with the auditors in preparation for the upcoming audit, the FY twenty-four audit. Our office is trying to implement some more efficient processes for processing invoices and more, you know, more in a timely manner, getting things done as soon, you know, bills paid as soon as they can so we can avoid the late fees, making sure we have all the proper documentation, W9s and everything, and, you know. We're working on adopting content manager, which is part of Munis, which will be at the town meeting as an article, I believe. This'll eliminate a lot of the numerous copying. Right now, if a department head submits an invoice, they keep an invoice, they send us the original, then they make a copy so we can use that as a remit. Content manager will allow us to streamline this where we can scan it straight into the program, into Munis. At any point in time you wanna review that invoice, you just click on it, pulls up the document right there. We don't have to, you know, store all them, all the invoices, you know, in files and boxes and it'll be a lot easier than trying to, you know, look and find out, like, all right, what warrant was it on, what year was it in? Everything's right there. And we're gonna do the same thing with the payroll for PAFs, education, anything that comes in with, you know, for PAF documentation will be in the Harper's payroll. I've been working with Jen, treasure collector, quite often, working with payroll, health insurance, trying to clean out previous year outstandings on, or fiscal year outstandings on the tax levy, so we can try and clean that up. And anything else that comes through the office.
And you briefly talked about the past years and the encumbered, but that's bad.
Yes, so at the end of every fiscal year, department heads will submit a list of outstanding invoices that they might not have the actual invoice for. It's like they ordered it, they don't have the invoice yet and so it'll be, it'll come after the fiscal year's ended. So we encumber, you know, whatever their request is for that next year to pay those outstanding bills. We, I had come across in the school budget that they had encumbered a large amount of money and were still charging current invoices to that budget. So after I talked with Patrick in the school, they said that was, just seemed to be a path of practice where they encumbered, you know, a certain amount and kinda just charged to it until they were told not to charge to it for current invoices. So we've worked with Patrick and we're not, you know, we've put a kibosh on charging anything else to that, so they have like a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand remaining in that fiscal year, twenty-four encumbrance, that, you know, will come back at the end of this year and there won't be anything else charged to it, so.
So you mentioned audit, we're coming up on our audit, I do have it on the agenda. You know, I think, can you just talk about that process and, you know, something I'm interested in, I know the board is interested in, like, using that as an opportunity to look at economies and efficiencies and making sure that we're, you know, will that examine, like, redundancies in our operation?
So this audit is, so this one is what the, our auditors that we hire out, we'll give them, we're working on FY twenty-four, so, you know, they send us a list of documentation out there, you know, wanna review, make sure our recordings are accurate, you know, and done timely. It's more of like, you know, you've got the commitments, make sure everything's just kinda lined up on that. Jen and I, we've been discussing of, you know, kinda doing our more, our own audit in-house, you know, to kinda, she'll kinda explain a little bit more on that, but that'll be more like an economical, you know, for an in-house one, whereas-
Will we use the existing firm to provide that support?
We can ask the firm we have now to also do an economy and efficiency analysis. You can also have them do a regulatory procedure analysis.
I mean, I don't know how the board feels about it, but look, we're gonna be, Mr. Kelly's gonna be retiring, we're gonna be handing the keys off to somebody new. We've got, you know, we've got, you're our most veteran finance person probably, right, in the year. I think we owe it to ourselves and the taxpayer to provide a blueprint of what the hell's going on over here, what we need to do moving forward. Any department that touches money in this town should be looked at and examined. It's not to say that there's any, you know, shadiness or hanky-panky going on, but I think it's just a matter of getting things operationally as buttoned up as possible. You know, I talked to the department heads today. I'd like to see, I'd like for us to all have an organizational chart, like, who's doing what, who reports to who, that we can all refer to, that the general public can refer to. You know, another thing we've talked about is, yes, we have head count and we have a salary attached to that, but we all know that an employee costs more than just what the salary is, there's benefits and there's, you know, health insurance and all of that stuff, so I think I'd like to know that data, like, what a head count actually costs the town, 'cause it's more than just the salary line item that we see. So, you know, if we can work on that and get that information to the board and to the finance committee, I think that just puts us in a better position where we have to make decisions. We can be much more analytical about what we're doing versus just saying, "Well, this is the way it's always been done." Like, that is an example, right? What we just heard about, "Well, this is the way it's always been done." Might've been good twenty years ago, but today when we have limited funds, the way we were doing business before, we've gotta turn this thing on our head, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
No, you're our financial-
I just, I would just, while Jamie Lynn's at the podium, I'd just like to say thank you for taking the job. After Mr. Kelly and I interviewed you, I was very impressed with your resume and I was even more impressed after you got in and started doing the job. So thank you very much for what you do every day that you walk through that door. I'm incredibly, incredibly impressed with her work ethic. She's, she is looking at things all on her own, right, and just questioning, "What is this and what is that?" She's, you know, deep diving into all of that stuff and she's really scrambled the eggs, in other words, to really get answers to what the hell is going on, so I just, I commend you and I thank you very much for doing what you're doing on behalf of the board of selectmen and the town of Pocahontas residents, so thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you.
You know, at the end of the day, like, when we talk about, you know, I don't wanna say one department's more important than the other, everybody contributes to the overall mission.
Yeah.
But the finance department is, if there's ever a critical mission or essential personnel, it's the finance department, 'cause if you don't have solid finances, then you lose all credibility with the taxpayer. You know, at the end of the day, we've got ten, ten thousand eight hundred bosses.
Yeah.
And whether you're vote, whether you voted in an election or not is immaterial. We've got taxpayers that we are the stewards of their money and every decision that we make should be in the interest of the taxpayer. So whether you're somebody who's answering the phone or making the business, the business decisions or whatever it is, if it's not gonna benefit the taxpayer and if it's not for the taxpayer, then it's not something we should be doing, right? So, so thank you. Hopefully we can get this thing up and running and get the train back on the tracks. Thank you for your work. Jen, up next.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Grant, treasure collector. Thank you, Jamie. You streamlined a lot of what we were gonna talk about. My biggest thing is cross-training. I am huge on cross-training everyone, so it's, if Jamie's ever out, I can help out in that department, she can help out in my department if needed. And then the FY twenty-four audit, we just got all the paperwork from the auditor, so we're gonna start working on that. Hopefully by next week, we can submit all of their information to them. We are in the heat of open enrollment and I am excited to help with questions, with onboarding any, anyone onto the plan. The audit, I would love to, as Jamie said, audit each department, go in, figure out their cash, whoever's handling cash. We're doing a lot of the online permitting now, so selectmen's office is onboarded with online, building department, treasure collector's office, DPW just went online, so all recycling payments can be paid online, you do not have to come to the office anymore. So nights, weekends, that will help a lot of residents. Trying to get town clerk next onto the online, so birth certificates, marriage licenses, all of that information, they can get online. Jamie took the spotlight, so IMC with the police department, I would love to get that implemented sooner. I know it's there, I believe there might be an article, or I'm not sure, for town meeting. I know we have it in place, it was just the training and for payroll, it's gonna streamline all of the police department's payroll.
And scheduling.
Yes, scheduling, everything, so I don't know how it works on the police department's side, but for payroll purposes, it's gonna be a lot easier. So look at our handwritten grid that we get now.
Great. Well, thank you, Jen. I know, again, it's been, it's been a lot going on, you've done, you've done, you know, you've done the best you can with internal, I know, you know, your office, you got some folks there really doing great work and they serve the public fantastic, you know, it's not popular at this time of the year when you're dealing with getting tax bills paid and, you know, it's-
We have a great team.
But they do, you know, Karen does a great job over there and so, kudos to them and thank you for keeping everybody motivated and-
Thank you.
-that's the trick as a manager, is that during the toughest times is to keep people motivated and productive, so, so good on you. Next item, gentlemen, on the agenda when it comes to finances, that we've had a vacancy in the-
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
While she's up there, could we touch on the ban and how we have to roll it over?
Sure.
Because it's in her shop.
Okay, so we'll just take item number eight, which is the ban renewal.
I'm gonna grab my folder. So the school roof ban was up for renewal, the sale went through yesterday. I just received the paperwork from Hilltop FedEx, half hour before the meeting, for the select board to sign. We're renewing it until October of twenty-twenty-five and-
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
We messed up doing the ban and stopping it shy in May where we didn't have a town meeting to get money to pay this thing down. She just mentioned the month of October, again, stopping it shy of a fall town meeting if we're anticipating doing that.
That would be for the money where appropriated in this town meeting, this spring town meeting would either-
So I haven't looked at the warrant, but I don't know what kinda money you're talking about.
It would, it would, it would either pay off half of the ban or the full ban up to the board's discretion, but this just rolls it over so we get past June and July.
I understand, but if you're gonna just, what's the balance, five-seventy?
Five-seventy.
So the balance on the ban is five-seventy. There isn't really anything, I think there's like fifty grand available in the solo revenue fund, so that's really not a lot. So we would be depending on fall town meeting to pay this thing off, off.
Well-
So why would we want a ban to expire in October? We would want the ban, we would want a ban for more than six months at a time, ban for nine months, whatever it may be, so if you go in the fall, you can kill off the rest of that thing once and for all and not keep re-banning.
'Cause I don't think you'll have money in the fall to do it completely.
As long as we get free cash, we're gonna fight a lot earlier than what we did this previous year, we should. So last year we didn't close out our books, that's what screwed us all up, right? It was an accounting issue.
Yeah.
Right? We have Jamie Lynn in place now upstairs, she's taking the bull by the horns. I, I'm pretty confident we will close out year in a lot faster than what we did the previous year with what we had to work with upstairs, so.
But there is a possibility, depending on what the board wants to spend, you could appropriate all the money.
That's what I'm saying, so we're gonna, we're asking to make a vote to October, but we don't know what we're doing financially yet, 'cause we haven't reviewed the warrant articles to see what we're doing with free cash. That lies the problem of what we're doing. And she just mentioned the date of October and I've already calculated in my head that we need to go seven months out to get us to November. You're only gonna pay a chunk off, what's the chunk you're gonna pay off right now? What were you anticipating for a warrant article to pay the ban, two hundred?
Two-fifty, and then there's some other money that we can clean up from articles, so we're looking at two-fifty to three-fifty.
I know, I got a copy of articles, I was gonna have a discussion with the board when we got to that about cleaning up some outstanding articles, because I think it's, it makes me sick to my stomach that people come and ask taxpayers to fund things from article money and then I look at the books and we're sitting on articles that are five years old. Obviously that wasn't that important to you, right? Because no money's been spent on a certain account, so I would like to dissolve a boatload of outstanding articles and put it towards the ban.
Yeah, we did that the last time and that's what I was gonna talk to the board about this time.
I'd just like to get rid of, I'd like to get rid of the ban, 'cause we're pissing away a lot of money in interest.
I think you can get rid of it in October.
So do we, for this, the question here, this ban renewal, do we need to take any action or do we need to, can we take this up at the next meeting?
We have to roll it over.
We have to roll it over.
Until the May date.
So I just didn't vote those options of, instead of banning it for six months, which it appears we're doing, banning for eight months and nine months, and what does that bring into the equation?
I think it's too late.
It's always too late, it was too late last year, too. That's the problem. Kinda like the engineer with the poles, you think a little bit outside the box, you do a little bit better forward-looking thinking.
I think you can pay it off now. It's gonna be one of my recommendations for the war.
That's fine, we'll go with, I apologize, Jen.
That's okay.
You said the word October and I already had November, right?
Right.
'Cause that's usually when we do a fall town meeting.
Right.
So continue, please.
So I do have, I was not expecting to have the paperwork for you today, so I do have the paperwork if you'd like to sign it or review it and then sign it at a later date.
Or you can just do a vote and sign it after the meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion to renew the ban? Is there any specific language we have to use or?
No.
The motion to renew the ban?
Yes.
Do we have to add the dates, Mr. Kelly?
No, it's a six-month ban.
No, it's a six-month ban.
Six months.
So motion to renew the ban for six months?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great. Next thing, finance related. I realize we have some union stuff that we have to work through, but we've gone round and round on this. It's been a recommendation interview to nominate Tanya Tavarez as Assistant Treasurer Collector. I think just to give the department some degree of clarity. It'd be great if we could make a motion to appoint contingent upon the union issues. I know, Mr. Gasper, you're running point on that if you have any insight, but I would hope that that wouldn't hold up our ability to, to make a management decision and move forward. So I don't know if you want to, any insight on that?
I have a meeting, I believe it's Wednesday, May seventh at one forty-five PM.
Okay.
With the union on this matter for them to review the MOA to some questions. We, Mr. Kelly and I have made some changes to the MOA. We, we believe it's a, it's a legitimate MOA. So it's just they, they would like some time to sit down with us and have a discussion. And I said, that's final, central meeting. I need to get this position filled.
Great. Personally, again, I don't know the inner workings of it, but I think we could make a motion to appoint contingent upon this, this discussion. If there's any issues down, we can rectify them at our next upcoming meeting. So there are motion to appoint Tanya Tavaz as the Assistant Treasurer Collector, subject to union discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great, thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, we've got the finance stuff. Now you all can go back to work. Thank you. All right, we do have executive session number one. And then we have other executive sessions. I mean, I don't know, do we want to? So the executive session one, we do have to come back. It's a public session, correct?
Correct.
All right, so why don't we do that one? Under executive session one, executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-eight, subsection A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, health insurance, Alliant. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body in the chair, so declares on the board, we'll return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call vote, Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
Roll call vote, Mr. Hinckley?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes. And we are now in executive session. All right, we are back from executive sessions. There are motion to reconvene the meeting?
So moved.
An executive session. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, first item on the standard business is Alliant. Alliant is our, works for us on our health insurance. So if you could introduce yourself and.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing us. My name is Chris. And I do work for Alliant. We are the fifth largest firm at what we do, but to put it in perspective, what matters to you? We have about forty-plus years of municipal experience. Everyone within my office works with Massachusetts municipalities, but of course, we backdrop on a national firm that has all the suites and service that you would need. I'm going to go through the packet relatively quick here. If there's any questions, just slow me down. The second page in the packet here, it's, it talks about the health insurance marketplace, but the reality is we're in a very challenging time, right? Maya had a range of nine point nine to nineteen point nine percent, which is the highest range I've ever seen. SMHG, which is your local joint purchase group here, had an average increase of twelve percent. So the reality is the marketplace is in a challenging spot. Moving on from there, we went up, we took the town of Acushion out to bid as you're leaving a match to a health group, and we got a fully insured bid from Harvard Pilgrim, a bid with HPI and Blue Cross with Shield in Massachusetts declined a quote. So when you, when those sorts of things happens, of course, it's a shorty market. So the good news is we were able to secure a self-funded quote for the town of Acushion within a captive where you'll still be able to share risk with several other municipalities at a stop-loss level, right? Harvard Pilgrim came in at fully insured at twenty-nine point one percent increase over current. Obviously, that's an increase that we could not sustain as a town here. So we continue to look. HPI came in with a fully reinsured quote that's nine point nine percent over current. What does that mean to the town of Acushion? It means an insurance carrier is covering all of your risk above nine point nine percent above current. Moving on from there, if there's no questions, the important part is, is, is yes, it's a nine point nine percent increase. What's going to change for a membership? Nothing is going to change for your membership by way of network, by way of, by way of plan design or anything around that nature. The cost is going up nine point nine percent, but nothing else downstream from there is going to change, except for a few augmentations to the plan, and we'll talk about those in a bit. Moving on behind the compensation disclosure forms, we're going to move on past the match and the network because this, the town's already used to this network. You already have it in place. I'm going to move us forward to this pathway slide because it's important for you all to know. Part of your Aetna plan, your Medicare plan includes retiree first, which is a concierge service. That's now included on your active plan. There's a concierge service for all of your active members. So any issues they have now, they have a massively augmented customer service experience. It's not just calling customer service and asking a question. You call your, your concierge service, they follow up with you. It's, it's more than just a one-and-done conversation. They'll help if, if you need a prior off, they help, they help work with your doctor to get your prior off. If you need to schedule an appointment with a specialist, they'll look up the specialist to actually, actually book it for you. So a huge improvement to your plan there. Beyond that is, I'm not going to really cover this one too far, but there is an app that comes along with that. Concierge service has twenty-four hour messaging between eight AM and eight PM. People can message a human outside of there. It's an AI chat bot that covers them until a human gets back in the next day. So really powerful tool for your members to access their, their care. I'm going to go, keep moving on from there. It's no copay to health. If your folks want to use it, it's voluntary for things like pink eye, UTI, sinus infection, those kinds of things. They can call a doctor, they could diagnose, prescribe over the phone. It saves you an urgent, urgent care visit or a hospital visit, saves time, saves money for the plan. Any questions about what we've covered so far? I know I've covered a lot pretty quick. Very cool. I'm not going to go too much further on except for to say that you have now the best-in-class behavioral health network that's available in the state. Not only are you utilizing the Harvard Pilgrim network for behavioral health, on top of that, we have what's called a spring consulting behavioral health network. And then on top of that, members are allowed to see any behavioral health specialist and it gets reimbursed at the network level, right? The reason we do that is because behavioral health specialists are leaving networks by and large. We want to make sure people have access to people that they are receiving to keep, keep, keep that quality of care. Any questions about any of that? From there, there's not really too much else to cover. Again, the most important thing you have to hear from me today is the, the rates are going up nine point nine percent. Nothing's changing by way of plan design or network for your members. So it should be a smooth transition into this plan. And again, we're adding things like concierge service and a whole lot of other bells and whistles to help support people get the care they need.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good day. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Cheers. Next item on the agenda is Hamlin Street update. Essentially, good news. The road is open, it's now open to the public. However, at some point over the summer, the DPW will begin drainage work in that area, but that should not impact the bridge. But the paving will commence after the drainage. People are interested in like what's going on over there as far as the quality of the road. I know all of us had a hand in moving that along with Mass DOT. I think the workmanship is fantastic. Beautiful. Really, really looks nice. I encourage people just to go check it out. It really fits in with the character of the town and that area there. So glad to see that that is, is done. And thank you to all the residents for their patience during that process. And so, you know, I'm glad it's done and it was done well. So thank you.
About to use it for the first time?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a reminder to the public. I know you haven't driven down Hamlin Street in two and a half. Slow down, please.
Right.
People that live on Hamlin Street aren't used to seeing cars flying by their house. Just pay attention, please, and remember that people do live and walk down Hamlin Street. It's still got some curbs, so please pay attention and drive safely.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, it does talk about paving. We, we need DPW director to get us an estimate. He can do some calculations to prepare us for the forward-looking year for paving because there's many other paving projects that need to be done. So if we can have Mr. Kelly put in a request that we like an estimate on paving costs for Hamlin Street, get a, get a jump start on that.
Yeah, great idea. Why don't we do this for the next meeting? Ask Mr. Manaya to come in and talk about, come up with a game plan on paving and what he sees and so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, we'll definitely be going out to bid on that, right? So he can handle some smaller projects, but the larger projects cannot do. So I, I anticipate it's going to be a significant chunk of what we have left in chapter ninety funds. So I would have to, if I was a betting man, I'd say that road's anywhere between five and six hundred thousand dollars to pave that road. So we need to come up with a number, do some planning for the future.
We've got some drainage to do in there.
He's already got all the drain piping stuff. He's running drain, well, when I anticipated, he's already run some drain before the bridge work was done from the river over to the corner. And then he's going to go up to the middle road area because a lot of people have sump pumps and they're pumping into the road in the winter time. It's creating a lot of havoc with ice and safety issues. So I think he's going to go up to the middle road area and tie in as much as he can there and be pretty much done with it.
I think that's actually, there's a drain over there that started collapsing and dropping down. He put in an extra drain. And it dropped because of all the water being pumped in there. It, it settled way too fast, so.
Yeah, there's a big barrel over it right now.
Yeah.
All right, good stuff. This is more of a housekeeping item. I know Mr. Hinckley and Mr. Gasper wanted a review of the, where we are with fees. Still looks like to be some work to be done on that. So what I'd like to do is just put a, a date certain as to when we'd like a final report. Say like the second meeting in June or we can come up with like June fifteenth. What the difference, I don't, I'm looking at my calendar. Let's see.
Second meeting in June would be June twenty-four.
Okay, so then.
But we should have it done by then so the fee schedule could be implemented for the new fiscal year, July first. And start out of the gate with a clean slate.
Right, so let me look at the calendar here. Hold on.
June tenth.
Yeah, hold on, let's just look at the calendar.
In case you have to hold any public here.
Yeah, June tenth. We've been going on this for like, you know, three months now. So let's get something to the board by close of business, May, I mean, June sixth, and then we go on the June tenth agenda. So this will have an opportunity to review it. Is there a motion to direct department heads to get us a final, final of permit fees by June sixth?
In, in a format approved by the board. It should be one spreadsheet.
I don't know what that format is, so I'll leave it up to you to decide. There's a motion on the floor, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Why don't we create a template for them to fill out?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Let's do it. We'll create it, they fill it out.
Correct.
All right, next item, the one we've all been waiting for, Ms. Viveros. I think we have finally come to a, a game plan on the West Island Beach permit. If we've got a plan, so Sydney, why don't you come up with a final, final proposal of the timeline and how we can hopefully serve our residents?
All right, so as some may know, my name is Sydney Viveros. I'm the Executive Administrative Assistant for the Slechman's Office and the Town Administrator. So as a recap, we have one hundred fifty passes. Fifty will be first come, first served with priority to the sixteen residents who did not have the chance to take advantage of the discounted rate last year because they purchased before the agreement was executed. And one hundred passes will be put up for lottery. So I spoke with the Treasurer Collector's office. They told me that the best date that would work for both our office and theirs would be May sixth for the first come, first served. I'd like to propose to have that come through this actual meeting room. So everyone will be able to park, enter this way. We'll be able to either have a desk down here to take in their information or have them go up through the Slechman's office and then they can exit through the front door just so it doesn't disturb day-to-day business for the other offices.
I would encourage you to keep it all here and we'll have a line and people can come and then go that way. And if it's a nice day, do it outside, you know?
Fine with me.
Good.
So I'll have Karen to help me too, just to make sure that everyone who is looking to get a pass, they have paid all their debts to the town of Acushion. That's important. They'll have to be a resident of Acushion, so they'll have to provide proof of residency if asked. And also that they have a valid vehicle registration. So those are the only three things that I think should be.
The valid vehicle registration for the vehicle, the sticker will be put on.
Correct, yes. Thank you. And then from there, we'll have the lottery system. So we'll have a Microsoft form that they can fill out. We'll post that link on the town's website and the Facebook page. And I also created a QR code that people can scan with their phones to access that form as well. So we'll have that posted online and at the Town Hall and Partyways building.
And that lottery registration time will run from May sixth through the thirteenth?
Yes.
Correct.
If that works.
And the day that we're going to do the first come, first served is May sixth, correct?
Yes, correct.
Good, okay.
And I'd like to encourage residents to make sure that their debts are paid, if they do have any, the day before each of those submissions end. So for example, if they want to do the first come, first served, they should pay all their debts by the fifth so that everything's all set and they don't lose their place in line because they have to go pay their debts to the collector's office. Same with the lottery, so.
You know what we could do too, like not to overcomplicate it, but you can have numbers, right? People are in line, here's your number, right? I guess, or something like that. So we just want to make some, make sure we have some order.
Okay, it's a good idea.
All right.
Okay, I think it's just important. I mean, you've got this spreadsheet, if you just put that online, because people need to know that if they do owe the town money, don't come here. Find out that you owe the town money. I think they need to do that early so they're not holding you up and you're not spending a whole day in there not a few passes. People need to be proactive, make sure all the bills are caught up, make sure they don't owe the town money. They come through the door and they can get.
Here's the deal too, like if you come in and you owe money, you lose your spot in line.
Essentially, yes.
That's why I'm trying to be proactive, right? It's giving people the heads up. If you, if you're going to come in for a beach pass, make sure before that deadline comes that your, your, all your past due amounts have been paid up and you have something to verify that, right? You go to the collector's office, say everything's been paid up, have a nice day. I think maybe that should be the way it's done, right? People should come in if they're anticipating getting a beach pass, get a slip from the collector's office saying no past due amounts, right? They're cleared so that you can just go, yep, there you go, have a nice day.
So one thing I'm thinking about, Sydney, is a parking situation.
I chatted with Chief Crew and I have warned him about this.
Yeah.
And I said that the date is still tentative. I spoke to him a couple of days ago. So he's aware if there's any congestion going on, but if you have any suggestions on how we could mitigate that issue.
So again, I'm thinking out loud, again, with this, we're just brainstorming to try to solve problems. Could we set up a satellite setup at Poole Park?
We could.
With a table?
I would ask that we do have a police officer with us because we are going to be taking in larger sums of cash that day. But that, that'd be fine with me, have it start in the morning and then.
Probably done in like an hour, right?
I would say so.
Yeah, I don't think it's a great idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Let me get with you, Sydney. Let me get with you, Sydney, and we'll figure that out and we'll make an announcement.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, one more meeting, but we'll, we'll get it right. We're, we're building the plane in the air, so.
Sounds great. So would you like to not have the May sixth date and we can push it back for the first come, first served?
Let's just. So for the, for the first group, what's it, fifty of them?
Yeah.
Technically minus sixteen, so.
Right, assuming those people.
You could probably handle the first fifty here, but the other hundred?
That's, yeah.
That's crazy out here. I mean, you'll have people camping out.
That's going to be a lottery.
That's going to be a lottery.
That's just signing up for the lottery.
Oh, yeah, so the first fifty is the only one we're worried about?
The only thing I could think of is next week is supposed to be very rainy.
Oh, is it?
So if we do have it outdoors, it'll be a little tougher.
Right, right, right.
Unless we, I know this sounds terrible, but we could do it, possibly speak with Chad and use the concession stand, but then everyone will get wet waiting outside.
Let's, um.
I'll be, why don't we just. I'll work with you offline.
I'll work with you offline.
You can do whatever you need to do with dates.
Okay.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Sidney. Is there a motion to adopt this plan?
Counsel, Council on Agents.
Could be that too. Is there a motion to adopt this plan?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, thank you. I'll work with you, Sidney, after this.
Thanks for putting this together. You did a real great job.
Thank you.
The guy in the closet was yelling.
Very good idea. All right, all right, let's see. Next item, so I'm a little rusty guy, so if I'm going through this stuff quickly.
It's Friday, we got nothing but time.
That's it. All right, so we've got ADA Improvement Grant, which is submitted to us by the Planning Department in Victoria. She was here earlier, but essentially there's no town match for this, so we're not on the hook on this. Jamie, do we know offhand how much the opportunity is?
I believe it's 25K, but I'd have to check.
And that's just, it's just a grant application to come in and we'll take, we review what we have in our facilities, what needs ADA upgrade compliance.
It's similar to what we did on Slocombe Street, when we were looking at the ADA compliance down in that project.
Called the Self-Evaluation Transition Plan. Is there a motion to direct the town planner to pursue this opportunity?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I do appreciate her giving us the heads up ahead of time. I know in the past, you know, like sometimes we go off and then we find out that we're on the hook for something that we didn't approve, so good. I think that was good.
Yeah, no, Ken has noticed some grants early to make sure we're on board with doing it. I know Mr. Hinckley, the former chairman, did put out an email making sure that there was no strings attached to the grant, so thank you, Mr. Hinckley, for doing that.
You're welcome.
Because it was a question I would ask.
Yep.
That I seen years ago.
All right. Next item is communication sent to us by Chief Farland at the Town of Akushnet. It's my honor and pleasure to convey to you and the residents of the Town of Akushnet that the Akushnet Fire and EMS Department has been awarded $9,500 in a grant form from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and the Department of Fire Services through the Fire Safety Equipment Grant Program. This is the grant's final year of a five-year plan and our fifth consecutive awarded grant, where we received $15,000 in FY '21, $16,000 and change in FY '22, $19,000 FY '23, $19,000 in FY '24, and $19,000 in '25, so an additional $9,500 supplemental grant. So this is good stuff. Thank you, Chief. This will be used for upgrading inventory, nozzles, thermal imaging cameras, so on and so forth. So really good stuff here, and we appreciate the Chief's diligence and hard work on this. Also, there's been a $3,500 MEMA award as well, so is there a motion to accept and place on file?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then next is to, and it's from the Chief. I'm sharing with good news. Earlier this year, the department was notified that Chief Farland was awarded the Massachusetts Professional Emergency Manager Associate Level from the Massachusetts MEMA. This award requires several intensive classes planned development. This is a huge accomplishment that shows the dedication to training, learning, and improving in the role of Fire Chief. So Chief Farland, congratulations, thank you to you. I know when you took the job, you know, you done a great job, you know, jumping in there and, you know, to follow somebody who'd been chief for so many years was big shoes to fill, but you've hit the ground running and done a fantastic job and exceeded all expectations. So hats off to you for doing that, Chief, and getting this recognition. It's not only good for you professionally, but great for the town as well. All right, I think that is it from a member of a business standpoint. We do have some budget items before we go into an executive session. Turn it over to Mr. Kelly for item number one under the budget.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick thumbnail sketch. Our revenue estimate is $519,000 increase. We've got almost no new growth. As our building permit revenue shows, which is down 30% from past years. As you know, the tax levy is about two-thirds of the revenue, and it's 88% plus based on residential. State aid is 25%, and local revenue is approximately 11%. State aid has been lagging. The state has not been helping the communities. It's somewhere the increase between year to year, a half a percent to a percent and a half. Our levy goes 2.5%, sometimes 3 with new growth. And our local revenue is about a 5% increase. The staff has presented you with their estimates and a draft budget. It's a draft budget where general government, there's a cut from the previous year of approximately $2,000. Public safety, we, unlike last year, fully funded our, the estimate for overtime and the increase is only $43,000 and change. I'll skip over education for the moment. Public works and water, the increase is only $58,000 and a half, and that includes the increase with the, for new benefit of the $115,000 for water costs. Human services, $65,000 decrease. Culture and Recreation, $6,000 increase. That makes sure the library's still certified. And joint benefit cost, you've heard about the insurance today, went up about $150,000. Excluding the schools, it's approximately $17 million for the town side of budget, including the joint benefit accounts. That's an increase of $181, $182,000. The increase for Old Colony is $347,000. Right now, the increase for, and that increase includes them keeping in the operating budget, the $132,000, they told us last year was a one-time cost. So they really should be down somewhere around $200,000. And right now, the school is cutting their original budget request, because their original budget request was $17,146, which was a $753,000 increase. The two school budgets were $1,100,000 increase, and with a $500,000 increase in revenue.
How's that math working out?
The math is working out terrible. But the real thing that I'm, I'm very incensed about is Old Colony not decreasing the $132,000 they said was cost, a one-time cost last year. And I am encouraged that when the school asked for figures for reductions, we told them to come in at level funding and work their way up from that. So we're hopeful that they'll come in and be reasonable. This is a budget year, when you look at the budget by budget, by department on the town side, almost every budget that we could cut, we cut. We've cut positions, we've looked at cutting expenses, but we are at the bone. There is nothing more you can cut at this year and even come close to providing mandated And I would ask the board to go over the budgets that the staff has given them. Admittedly, these are draft budgets, and until the school is done with their cutting, we're not ready for town meeting. Originally, town meeting was scheduled the beginning of June. I will ask the board at this time to schedule town meeting at June 16th.
Mr. Jim.
Yeah.
I had a conversation late last week with Mr. Kelly, and you know, last year, we had to move town meeting back two weeks, based on what lack of information we've seen as board for the warrant, the articles in the budget. I had much concern with Mr. Kelly last week, telling him, "I think you need to talk with the chairman and see if he'd be willing to postpone town meeting by at least two weeks to give us some time to, you know, look through these budgets and do another look around and see what we can and can't do with the budgets." Wait for numbers to be finalized, so I think it's crucial that we postpone town meeting by two weeks again.
I have no problem with that, and I would even go so further, if that if we don't have a budget deal in place that's acceptable, then we postpone town meeting and we go, we revert back to the previous year's budget.
If you do that, you can do that, but on the 16th.
Right.
But that would be a mess as far as 1/12. It's in effect 1/12 budget.
It's a nuclear option, but again...
We don't have the numbers from the state yet even. We only have the governor's numbers.
You know, I think you brought up a key point, Mr. Kelly. You know, as much as I like the Old Colony School, I mean, I pointed out that they took out the debt, but they put it into their operating budget right now. It exceeded $500,000, not just the $132,000, that was our share, but, and they come in overall with a budget that was up roughly $1.2 million in today's times. We're doing cuts, we're doing, you know, staff cuts and personnel and supplies and everything else, and everybody's gotta share in on that hurt, right? It's sometimes you pain. But again, coming in $1.2 million above the previous year's budget to me is quite high. And you see the impact, because we are roughly one-third of that school, right? We're like, I think we're 34% of the school, so.
Right.
I mean, whatever, you know, that million bucks translates right to 333, right? So it's a little bit disappointing that they can't shop in the pencils and try to bring that number down, and, you know, they don't think of, you know, $40,000, $50,000 given back to the Town of Akushnet, it's a lot, it's a lot where we're sitting at, right? I mean, I understand they need to have increases, but so don't we. And I don't think there's much left on our side of government that we have the capacity to do too much more.
We're decreasing, we're not increasing.
No, I understand, I understand that, but we do have certain fixed costs that are gonna go up too, and that's a percentage of whatever the number is that we have for revenue, right? I've been talking about that forever. I mean, you have Prop 2.5, you have new growth, those are two, your two biggest sources of revenue that the DOR says you can use to balance your budget. I mean, I've been telling folks for years, we have roughly $750,000, $800,000 a year to balance a budget. I don't know how people come in and say, "I want 400 and I want 700." There's only 800 and you just ask for 1.1, and we haven't even dealt with this side of government, right? So, I mean, I'd like to have a million dollars every year to be able to just spend, but the reality of it is, you just don't have that anymore, right? And we've seen what just happened at town, the election box, right? In this town, by an overwhelming no, 70% of the people that voted said no to an override. I know, I said not an override, it's a dead exclusion. The only difference between a dead exclusion for everybody at home listening versus an override, an override's in perpetuity and a dead exclusion's for a set period of time. So, you know, people are frustrated, and I think all of us share the concerns, I think the new chairman just outlined that, right? We're doing everything we can to make cuts, and he talked about a nuclear option, it's not something that we wanna do, but we're out of time. We, you come in level funded.
Last year, you said we were rolling quarters. This year, we're rolling pennies.
Yep. It's a difficult task.
So I need a vote because we have to go republizize and everything for the town...
Motion to have town meeting June 16th, 7:00 PM, the Ford Middle School.
Motion on the floor, is a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just, we're working in tandem with the Finance Committee.
Right.
I mean, this is all the parties involved. All right, let's see. So we are not, we have two executive sessions that we're not gonna return to. Do we have any selectmen's announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So there's been a lot of talk about random speed limits in town, and Mr. Gasper actually reminded all of us that there was an accepted Chapter 90 situation in 2017 that gave the Board of Selectmen the power to change speed limits in town depending on criteria. And I found out that it was never, the accepted vote from 2017 was never submitted to DOT. So I reached out to Pam yesterday, Pam put it all together, and she has forwarded all that information to DOT. So DOT will actually have it on file sometime next week, so if there is any speed limit concerns on any streets, we can revisit that at a future meeting.
So does that give us the flexibility to set our own speed limits? Or is it like a guideline?
We can set any, any speed limit in town based on Mass. Chapter, Chapter 90, Section 17B or C. I don't have any...
There's a couple of different subsections.
There's a couple of different subsections.
Well, we did it often.
Yeah, but essentially it gives us the ability to, if we deem like typical residential area where it's, could be considered busy, you can deem it 25, or you can actually dedicate it or designate it as a safety zone and drop the speed limit to 20.
Interesting, okay.
But it just gives us a little bit more flexibility, but in order to do that, the DOT needed it on file, so thanks to Pam for answering my questions and getting it over to DOT as of this morning, I believe, it was sent out.
So well done.
Don't ask me why I look at 2017. Can you report what it is, what it is? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I do have an announcement, because I don't know if it's been made public, I don't believe it has been, but with my work that I've been conducting with PJ Keating, they were kind enough to let me know that self-main speed work will be, there will be some self-main speed work done from the quarry down to the paving line. They're gonna dig some patches in the road to test for soil, for the composition of the soil, to see what's underneath of the road for future development of the road. So they did tell me, I think it's next week they'll be doing that, if not the week latest, but they will be, it will be all during business, day business hours, it won't be night work, so they'll go in and dig several different spots. I think there's three different locations, so for everybody that's out in that area, it will be PJ Keating doing the work for the state, but it's Mass. DOT work, and they are authorized to do the work.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, I do not have anything from an announcement standpoint. Enough talking today. Let's see, we have two executive sessions. One is executive session on the Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. United Steelworkers, Teamsters, Police Contract, ASME, Fire, DPW. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and the Board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session number one?
So moved.
Second.
We'll call vote. Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Executive session number two, executive session on the Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Town administrator search, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gas, no call vote. Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are now in executive session, and we will not return.